And give the invocation and then afterwards, I believe, our Economic Development Director, Mitch Sandel will lead us in the pledge. My Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity that you have to be able to meet here publicly and to be able to exercise our freedoms. Father, we're grateful for this land that we live in and for the many blessings that it affords us and for the many opportunities that are here. Please bless us as we go through these items that we can make the decisions that will be best for the community and the citizens that are here. And Father, please bless those who are serving us, those who serve in the armed forces far away and those who are here close by. The men and women that serve in our Sheriff's Department and Fire and Emergency Services, please guard and protect them as they try and help the public here. Please guard and protect them. Father, we're so very thankful for the opportunities that we have and for our freedom. Please bless us as we go throughout our lives that we might be able to continue to exercise those freedoms and do the things that are right. We say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Can you rise? Repeat the pledge after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Mitch. Did you get a chance to look over the minutes from July 17?
I did. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from July 17, 2020.
Okay, I'll second that. I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I probably ought to excuse.
There's usually three of us.
Yeah, I want to excuse Commissioner Scott. He is out of town and so that's why he's not here.
I thought he was calling in, but maybe the hurricane took down the power lines or something, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
Did you ever hear from him? Because I thought he said he was going to try to call in.
I didn't hear whether he was or not.
He did say he was going to try and call in, but.
No luck.
He didn't try very hard.
As long as we've got Chrissy running the computer here while we're good.
Between the two of them, we should be good.
Okay, yeah, we want to excuse him, so. Okay, any form of agenda items that we need to review or go over?
I don't think so. Just the future ones that we were talking about.
Okay.
And then Scott, he left. So does he want those other two move forward on development for the next week?
Okay. So we have the next one on the 19th?
On the 19th, yeah.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Any fire issues? We didn't have Corey or Tiffany here.
We had one fire out the promontory. It was about 1,600 acres. How much did it finally end up being Mitch?
Remember, somewhere in that.
About 1,600 acres. So we're lucky the wind blew the right way, so.
Yeah, we did have an interesting meeting. Corey and I were out to do the fire meeting out in Corinne last week because they were looking at hiring the two full-time firefighters. And anyway, I think there's some good things that we can do working together with Corinne Fire.
Good.
Mark, do we have any emergency management issues?
COVID.
Other than COVID?
No.
If you could just solve that, like, we'd be fine.
Yeah, we get that taken care of. White, I work with Josh Dallin of the Extension Office, trying to get some more definitive information about our locusts and cricket issues. We've got a couple places in the county that are fighting those. The DNRs, we have a maximum number of frogs and we all need to start hunting and eating them, so between the plagues of that and COVID.
Do we need imports of seagulls?
I was waiting for burning ale and river to turn red.
Okay. We'll keep our eye out.
It's on the agenda for next week.
You put it on the agenda? Jeez.
It's on the agenda, it won't happen.
Yeah. Okay, thanks Mark. Okay, well, it looks like we're at our 505.
Right on time.
Item here, so yeah. Brian Seward.
You guys want to come up here?
Yeah, you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves?
Sure.
Put that chair over here. Share with Big John.
Say your name into the microphone so she can get it on the record.
Brian Seward.
Yeah, yeah, bring those chairs around in the front there.
You can put them around. Use your, because that way you're twisting your neck side.
John Co Ford.
Grab that microphone and bring it up to.
Yeah, there we go.
Explain what you guys have done and kind of what you want to do.
So I was a member of the Combat Vets for a couple years and we had the opportunity to do the All Red Ride, which I don't know if you guys know, Michael Allred gave his life in Fallujah in 2007. So we got with them and they have a ride going every year supporting his service. So we've come to ask you if we could still keep using the memorial bell that you use on the Vietnam memoriam, I guess, and so we could use it in our ceremony that we do every year honoring the fallen. So they get their names sent out loud in front of everybody. We gong, I usually am the gonger. That makes sense. I don't know what you call them, so.
That's your title, the gonger.
Yes, sir, yeah. And, oh, sorry, I didn't, so I'm a retired Royal City Police Officer, retired 2015, 20 years, one month. I made it, thank you God. And I'm also retired from the Air Force, so.
Wow, you don't look that old.
Well, 50, so, but I got medically retired, so, from the Air Force, so can't complain. So we really want to support this thing and we appreciate you guys allowing us to do it the last year as the Combat Vets and if we could keep that going with you guys as the American heroes, it'd be an honor for us to do it. And I take care of the bell personally. I wrap it in a blanket, take it up in my car while my wife drives, so we make sure it gets there safe, not me, so. And I have three daughters, so my nails are.
Your nails are. I did notice that. I was like, wow.
Yeah, people keep looking at my fingers. I'm like, I got three girls, so whatever they want to do, I'm okay with, to me, so.
That's awesome.
No, that bell's neat, so.
We appreciate your service.
Yeah, it's great to be American. I don't care what anybody says.
Well, and muggins, I shouldn't say muggins. Doug Adams that built that for us is from New Core.
It's beautiful. It's awesome.
And some of the things that are on that are pretty impressive.
Yes, sir, yeah.
And the first year we used it, we used that here on the courthouse steps and if nobody was here when we did that, they did the gong for everybody that passed on. It was pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's.
Breathtaking, so.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it. I mean, I'd make a motion that we let these guys use the Veterans Bell for the service. When's the date?
August 29th. It's a Saturday.
August 29th, on a Saturday. And then I would just make sure that you get ahold of Cody.
Cody.
To be able to get in and out of the building.
To get it.
When you need it, be able to get it.
Cody, I will.
Okay, I'll second that motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by Commissioner Hadfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Thanks, you guys.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Summers, great meeting you in person.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you, guys.
Great thing that you do.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming up.
Be safe.
Okay, looks like Pete, and I'm going to butcher.
He's not even going to try your last name.
Don't even worry about the last name.
Sorry.
He put the chair back, but you put it in front.
Yeah.
Sit down, thanks.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you all.
And just state your name and where you're from.
My name is Pete Shabastary. I'm a geologist with, I'm a geologist with Pilot Gold USA and I'm from Draper, Utah.
Cool.
So I just want to come here and give you a brief presentation on who we are and the project we're working on in Idaho. And you're probably wondering, why is he talking about a project in Idaho?
Well, because it's half.
Actually, the closest town to the project site is Snowville. The largest population center is Tremont. And that's why I'm here today to talk to you and tell you about what we're doing here. Next slide, please. So Liberty Gold, who are we? We're a Toronto Venture Exchange listed junior mining company. We're headquartered in Vancouver, BC, but we're also very local. We have a local office in Elko, Nevada, projects in Nevada, Utah, and Idaho. We always try to hire local whenever we can. We just hired two geologists out of USU to work on the project.
Go Aggies.
Yeah, I'm University of Utah myself, so. So we try to be very much a local company, even though we're headquartered out of the country. Pilot Gold is the local entity here. Like I said, Pilot was formed as a spin-out from a company called Frontier Gold that was purchased in 2011 by Newmont Mining for 2.3 billion. And what do we do? We look for and we develop precious metals deposits in the Western US. Some information on our company, we're a publicly traded company. We have 300 million shares out, market cap of around 510 million, and we have about 14 million in cash in the bank right now. Next slide, please. So who are we? We're a fairly small group, mostly geologists, a few engineers, a metallurgist, investor relations people, and that's it. Again, we hire contractors locally whenever we can. So what do we do? We look for large oxide gold systems and we think we found one right across the border. There you can see where Snowville is. Black Pine is right across the border.
Is some of your tailings in Utah, though?
No, they're not.
Really?
No, it's.
I was just up there last week, so.
Oh, were you really? Okay, yeah, the Black Pine Range, you're familiar with it. Yeah, yeah. So this was a past-producing gold mine, Pegasus Gold mined it from 1992 to 1997. At the time, gold was in a declining market from 350 an ounce down to around 300 an ounce, which eventually did amend. They just couldn't make money at $300 an ounce gold. It's worth noting that gold just broke $2,000 an ounce yesterday. It's up to $2,050 an ounce currently. In 2016, we identified the opportunity at Black Pine and bought the company that currently held it and immediately started going to work doing a permit with the Forest Service there. Took us about 18 months and a quarter million dollars to permit a large drill program. Yes, we had to do a full-blown EA to permit a drill program. Another reason why we like Black Pine is it's a large project area. It's about 20 square miles with gold deposits throughout the entire area that we've identified so far. Another thing we really like is it's technically simple. There are no major issues at Black Pine. There's no surface water, there's no groundwater in the rocks, but there's lots of groundwater in the valley. There's no people. And it's so far what we've found is the oxide gold is very amenable to extraction. So we like projects that are technically simple. And it's high-grade. So you can see historically, they mined about a half million ounces at a .63 grade. We're drilling deeper and getting intercepts on the order of 2.56 grams, .94 grams, and 1.52 grams, so double to triple what they were mining before at.
How deep you have been going?
What's that?
How deep you have been going?
We're drilling holes up to 1,300 feet deep. Next slide, please. So how do we find and define these gold deposits? We drill and we drill a lot. So in January 2019, we received an environmental assessment with the UFFS, USFS, allowing 135 acres of disturbance. And our disturbance looks like that. What we do is build roads and drill sites to drill from. And then we bring in equipment and we drill holes off there. So it's fairly low impact. When we're done doing what we do, we go back and reclaim it, even though in this area we think it's going to be a mine again. We're still required to reclaim everything that we've done. We began drilling in 2019 with one drill rig, ramping up to three very quickly after we made the first discovery there. And in January of this year, we decided we needed more acreage, more room to get around. So we applied for an amendment for an additional 50 acres. They're still working on that right now. It'll likely take a full year to get it done.
So eventually, this might be an open pit mine.
Yes, yes. So this year, we've been drilling with two rigs since April 1st and a third rig was added June 1st and we're adding a core rig for a second round of metallurgical testing next month. This year's program is going to be roughly 151,000 feet of drilling and that's budgeted at $10 million. We'll be testing the main zone and 10 new outlying target areas. And we're also going to be trying to secure process water. We're going to need about 1,500 acre-feet per year to run a gold mine. So we're trying to identify water rights in the area that we can get even across the border here in Utah.
So settling ponds?
To run the heap leach. And most of that water, believe it or not, goes into dust suppression.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're going to be doing more met testing, just to be sure you can get the gold out of the rock. And by the end of the year, we hope to do a resource estimate, which is a measure of how many ounces we've found, and a PEA, which stands for Preliminary Economic Analysis. So the Black Pine Range has the right geology. It is in the Great Basin. It's, the range is underlaid by carbonate rocks, Pennsylvanian Permian Age ochre formation, which are the same rocks that you get out at Bingham Canyon. So you know, these rocks are very susceptible to mineralization, which we like to see. The mineralization type is something called Carlin-style mineralization, named after the town of Carlin, Nevada, where these deposits basically dominate the landscape. These deposits tend to be very large, on the scale of 2 to 10 million ounces in size, and they produce very large, very profitable, long-lived mines. So last year, the Great Basin produced roughly 6 million ounces of gold. And like I said, the gold price, that's a bit dated. 2036 is when I checked it this morning. It's gone up from there. Most of the banks are raising their long-term price predictions on gold, silver, and copper right now. Next slide, please. So building a resource base, this is kind of the view of the mountain, looking from I-84 there to the west. You can see the range, some of the historic pits. We began drilling in the yellow area. We expanded to the green area. We're now currently drilling in the blue area. That red area is all the areas we have to test to kind of drill out this area completely. There's a, above that, you have kind of a geologic section showing where the gold lies in relation to the mountain. The gold lies in several different stratigraphic units and is structurally controlled as well. And these rocks are really messed up, so there's a lot of gold and a lot of structure to host mineralization there. Next slide. So the future, what are our plans going forward? So text and bold are things that we've already done, like compilation of the data, permit applications for exploration, engineering studies. We've done the first met testing. We're going to do two or three more rounds of metallurgical testing. We're looking at where we could put leach pads, facilities, processing plants. We are looking for water sources again. We need about 1,500 acre-feet per year. And other things that we're going to be doing to get to a mine, we have to do a lot of geotechnical work. Look at how the rock behaves, what sort of pit slope you can use, the loading on the leach pads, that sort of thing. And we look at weather, air quality, wildlife, and social. That's why I'm here today, is to begin the social aspect of this. You can't build a mine without having the local communities engaged with what you're doing out there, because it is on public land. So I'm here just to introduce us and talk about what we're doing and what we hope to do out there. From here, we're going to be doing a pre-feasibility study, which involves a lot more reserve drilling, probably another 250,000 feet. From there, you go to a full feasibility study where you look at the economics, you look at where the workforce is going to come from, you look at everything, basically, in a pre-feasibility. From there, you go to a full bankable feasibility and you submit a plan to the state to build a mine out there. All that could take anywhere from five to seven years. It's a long timeline. Like I said, we like technically simple projects and this one is about as simple as it gets. So there's a clear permitting pathway, no real obstacles out there. What we're targeting is a mine with a 200,000 ounce per-year production with about a 15-year mine life.
That's a good profit.
Yeah. Really, anything over a 10-year mine life is good, but this is what we're looking at right now. So what does this mean for Box Elder County? What does it mean for you? Short-term benefits is going to be continued investment in the local economy. Like I said, we're always trying to hire local, use local contractors whenever we can, and develop local partnerships. We want to be a good neighbor, so anything we can do to help here in the county, any sponsorships, anything like that, that you can think of, we'd be happy to participate. Potential long-term benefits to a mine of this scale would be 500 full-time jobs during the construction phase and 300 full-time jobs, long-term jobs, while the mine is in operation. That'd be a large increase to the local taxes. Like I said, Tremont is the closest big town, Burley's the next closest, but Snowville's our go-to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Long-term outcomes, I also want to stress that mining is a temporary use of the land. This was mined before and it was reclaimed and it's completely open to the public right now. And they did a really good job of reclamation, other than the open pit, it's hard to tell they were ever there. That's what we plan to do if and when we mine. We'll put it back the way it was and there'll still be public access. Anyway, are there any questions for me? I really do appreciate the time to just come in and introduce myself and let you know what we're doing out there.
I think it's, I think it's great to have that information because we are so, you know, close in proximity, you know, especially Snowville.
Yeah.
I know Snowville's been wanting economic development stuff and that'd be a big boost to them.
It could be a huge boost, yeah.
Yeah.
Are you going to own zebras like the other guy in Snowville? Have you been out since?
I've seen the zebras, yeah.
Have you seen the winery?
I didn't know about the winery.
100 acres.
I've seen the grapevines there and the zebras. I kind of had to stop and rub my eyes a bit, yeah.
Right here in the middle of northern Utah.
Right.
Yeah, that's awesome. I was just going to give you my card in case you needed anything.
I have some cards for you as well. I'll just leave them over here. And please, reach out to me if anyone has any questions.
I'm a gold nut, so I'm going to call you.
Well, likewise, if anyone would like it to work, we'd be happy to host you. We'd show you what we're doing, why we're doing it.
Yeah, I think that'd be interesting.
We give out big trunks of gold.
Out there. No, we appreciate you coming and reaching out to us and giving us the info. That's great.
Thank you, and I really appreciate it.
Thanks for your time. Drive safe, back to Salt Lake.
Thanks, Pete.
Do you have his, do you have, I don't have a card. Oh, his.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming up. Oh, she's Shannon. She's not here.
Yeah. Do you want to skip that? Do you want to come back to it?
If she shows up.
Okay. All right, we have our 531, but they're not here, so we'll skip on, we'll move on to Sean here with the policy adjustment.
Hi, Sean. Don't know you behind the mask.
Yeah.
So what we're looking for today is Commissioner approval for an adjustment to the Treasurer's Adjustment Policy. This is the same policy we've had in the past. We're just looking for a change in the amount. In the past, the Treasurer's Office has been able to remove up to $1 of taxes. When it just doesn't make sense to send somebody additional tax notices for a dollar, we're looking to up that amount to $5.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, the time and effort alone.
Costs you more than what's worth, right?
Yep. So it makes sense to move it to 5, so, okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion, we change the policy of the Treasurer's Adjustment.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Yeah, thanks, Sean. Appreciate it. Okay, looks like we're on Scott.
He's not here.
Scott's not here.
He's getting ready to go on vacation. Come on, Jenica.
Doesn't mean he has to leave.
His wife's outside pulling him out the door.
Okay, just a couple of policy changes for me today. The first one is Section 3. At our most recent, I guess our second most recent, elected official and department head meeting, we discussed allowing employees to get their pay statements electronically. So this change just allows for them to opt into that and give that option. Mailed paper statements can still be available. They actually have to opt into the electronic version.
They have to opt into it?
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just texting Scott.
Makes sense to me. You got any questions?
No. No, I'm good with it. We've been working on it a while, so.
All right, entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion, we change Policy 3, Electronic Direct Deposit Statements.
I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by me, well, I should say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. You got me messed up because you were texting Scott. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, a second by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There.
There you go.
Now we're straight.
Just so you know, that'll go into effect the first paycheck of September.
Okay.
And this next one is Policy 15. It's the Fleet Management Policy. In recent years, we've been providing Safe Driving Awards to employees through gift cards through Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo has discontinued their gift card program, so between that and having luncheons to recognize these employees with COVID, we've decided to make some changes to the policy this year. They'll still receive their monetary award, it'll just go on their paycheck instead. And then in lieu of the luncheon this year, we've asked that they be given a $25 additional award.
You'll have a virtual luncheon?
Since they can't go to lunch, right? It's going to be a little tricky.
Let them go eat.
And so the policy change just shows that they'll get a monetary award on their paycheck instead of the gift card and it'll be on the second paycheck down in August, so.
I'll make a motion, we change Policy 15 to update that.
I'll second that. Motion by Commissioner Summers, second by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jenica.
Thanks, Jenica. And let's go back here to Scott Lyons on Robinson Investments.
Dan told me to hurry. Sounds like Stan. All right, so this is Agreement 20-42 with Robinson Investments. So I provide you, provided you with the improvements that are being required of the developer. So this development is, if you're familiar, along 900 North or SR13, as you are heading out of Brigham City. Don Robinson owns kind of some storefronts there where you've got like Skywalker trampolines and that. And behind that, he has some storage units. That area is part of Brigham City, but he owns an additional five acres to the north of that that's in the county. And he got site plan approval at that location for additional storage units. When this went through the review process for the Planning Commission, the county engineer requested that a development agreement or a right-of-way agreement be approved as part of the site plan review process. And that is to, basically, he has one with Brigham City currently to improve 1,000 West and 1,100 West, the two rights-of-way that flank the property on the east and west side. So this would basically bring it somewhat up to date with what he's got going on in Brigham City. So as far as these right-of-way improvements go, what you're looking at here, A, B, and C, those are the improvements that were required by the county engineer, or requested to be applied by the county engineer. And that's what's coming before you. As far as the final agreement, it's being finalized between myself and the county attorney. So I guess the request at this time would be to approve it subject to the county attorney's final review. Then we, once that's done, we can get you to sign it. I don't know if there are any questions?
Nope. Been working on it for a while, so.
Made it pretty clear, so yeah.
I'll make a motion. We approve Agreement 20-42 pending Steve Hadfield's. Okay, on the agreement?
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Have fun.
Looks like the other two items we canceled out, so looks like we're on to Steve. Resolution 20-12.
Just a resolution that was requested by our attorney that handles the tax appeals. Just saying that we're willing to retain him to hire, to pursue the current tax appeal with Pacific Court.
Has that worked out better than what we were doing?
Yep, it has.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution 20-12 authorizing the filing of cross appeals for 2020 centrally assessed properties.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Stan, you get to talk about Pilt Fairness Initiative.
Well, we talked about this before, and I think the biggest problem is that's what's happened. And we were trying to get this done before they actually just passed the Great Open, whatever it's called, Act, to try to get this a part of that bill. But basically, we're still getting pennies on the dollar for Pilt. And they're trying to get the initiative where we're actually getting paid what it's worth. So it's just something that we would like to sign on to, and hopefully, we can get the rest of the west to, to sign on to it too, because they just fully funded the land water conservation in the nation at the tune of $900 million on ongoing funds. And they have to, this is a have to. It's a, it's like everything else that the government has to do. That's something else that they have to do, which was crazy for them to think that they are going to go buy more property that they can't take care of the property they have now. So Pilt is still, year to year, it's 10% of our budget. Well, I don't know quite 10%, is it, give or take?
Big part of our budget, though.
Yeah. So if for some reason we could get it to the point where it's somewhat fair to be double or triple what we've got now, so I think we just support Pilt and the Fairness Initiative. And I'm not even sure I've got anything to sign, do I? I don't think so. So I don't even make a motion. I just bringing it up to your attention.
Okay. All right, yeah. I'm in favor of that as well, so. Region 8, emergency preparedness. Do we have that? Remember what that was?
I can tell you what it was. I don't know sure how it got on the agenda.
I'm not sure either. Maybe I.
Come on up here, Mark.
Yeah.
Just explain it since, since we're ahead of schedule.
I think I sent it to her and said we needed to talk about it. Okay, I assume it was the, come out of the.
Yes.
Mark Millet, Emergency Manager. So this, if this come out of the newsletter from EPA, is that what that was?
It was.
So we were highlighted as a county in their quarterly newsletter for EPA on the LAPC program, Local Emergency Planning Committee program, and what we do and how we do it. And we've, even through COVID, we've, we've moved into, you know, kind of a conference call type format. And somewhere, somehow, some EPA folks, probably through contact with the state, got involved in the conference call with us and was able to join it. I guess they've, they've been following this for a while. Anyway, they gave us an attaboy, basically, what it was, just in the, in the newsletter about the LAPC program we run here, the fact that we've got a good representation from our corporate partners throughout the county that deal with hazardous materials. And again, just kind of as a synopsis for everybody, the Local Emergency Planning Committee deals with hazardous materials that are transported and shipped and stored and used within our community. And it all comes out of the Community Right to Know Act that was put in place back in the late 80s, following the Love Canal and the methyloxyl cyanide release of Bo Paul, India incident with uncarbitin back in those days, and several things. So it facilitated a whole bunch of regulation. It required us to have this Local Emergency Planning Committee. It's a, it's an open venue for the public to join and, you know, businesses and so forth. And we treated it a little bit broader than just hazmat. We deal kind of preparedness stuff in general, but we got some good support from the community. And we meet in the sheriff's office most of the time, but then there's some times we actually go out and do chores of the facilities themselves, so we have kind of awareness. We coordinate with the responders, so the county hazmat and county fire marshal are all part of that process with the planning. So anyway.
And I just wanted to make sure that we gave you guys a shout out of how cool it was that I'm sitting here reading my emails in the morning, and I'll say, hey, wait a minute, I know these guys.
Yeah.
So.
Anyway.
No, I think that was awesome, and thank you for all you do.
Oh, that's, that's awesome, because, yeah, you've, you've done a lot with, you know, since you've been here.
We're lucky to have you.
I don't think people realize just how much you've done as far as organizing and getting things going. I'm sure Chief Deputy Ward can speak to that too, because before you, they were dealing with that.
Kevin was doing it.
Yeah, Kevin was doing it.
He'd be doing it.
Yeah. And, and you've really done a lot of stuff in our communities, and it's, it's showing. So thank you.
Very much, thank you.
Even if you drive me into active fires to go save buses.
As long as you're in the shirt.
Did you see that the other day? I sent you that picture about us driving into the fire to go save those people that night. It came up on my memories, and I'm like, what was I, what was I thinking?
Yeah, you were saving pictures.
Yeah, I'm like, what was I thinking?
Yeah.
You were just driving. Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. That's great. I'm glad we got that on there to recognize him.
I drew a blank, because it was like way ago.
Yeah.
One out of three is not bad.
Okay, as long as you remember this one.
Okay.
Okay, the Roads Claim, Uter Exchange.
I'm not sure I put that one on there.
Did I? I don't know. Commissioner Scott?
I'm pretty sure it was Stan.
I can't, I can't remember it. Can you look, can you remember that agreement?
This, this could be, let me look here. The Sitla letter.
It was a Sitla letter. Oh, okay. All right, now I remember.
Yeah. Roads Claim, Easement, 2248.
It was long last month.
Yeah. It was sent to, it was sent to Ms. Bennett, so we'll have her. No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, it was just a Sitla agreement contract.
Yeah. So, and is that, did that get forwarded?
Utah Test and Training Range.
Did that get forwarded on? Did it need to get forwarded on to you, Steve?
Yes, I looked at it. We sent it to the Recorder's Office, because there's a lot of legal descriptions there. While I was out of town, I was, an email came on that. I don't know who that went to.
I don't, I didn't see it.
Recorder's Office.
So we'll pass it pending your review?
Yeah, that's probably what they did. I'm not sure what they found.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract 20-41, the Uter Exchange, pending Steve Hadfield's approval.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, the second by myself. All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Sorry.
I wanted to tell you, so Chad did look at those, and then I sent them to Steve Hadfield.
Okay.
And so Steve needs, yeah, he needs to look at the new ones.
And that's a no.
Okay. All right. So, and we've got warrant register picked here.
I don't know, we haven't signed it. I think they brought it in. Did you?
Oh, there it is.
There you go.
All right.
Tell me it was my fault again. Go ahead.
It's your fault today, Stan. We should blame everything on Jeff, he's down here.
We should. Laurie, what do we?
Oh, we have a meeting after y'all, and so I just wanted to.
Do you want me to clean up?
That's why he was in such a hurry to get done, so you guys could get started on your meeting.
What do you want me to leave for you? I've got some yogurt pretzels. We're going to have a closed session, so you can't sit here through the whole thing. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Might have to go out in the hall for a minute.
I wanted to sit right back in that corner where Commissioner Scott sits. Then we have ours.
He learns from the best.
But he's not here.
What have you got tonight?
Work session on the landfill.
Oh. Cool.
There you go, Stan.
What time is that at?
6:30.
Yes, yes, that's right.
You just figured you might as well stick here where it's air conditioned.
I should have been here at 5, but just couldn't.
Oh, you're good.
So before we do anything else, we need to transition to our RDA that we've got, so.
I'll make a motion. We, oh, we don't have to do that?
Yeah, we'll just.
Okay.
We'll just.
Open up your RDA.
Open up the RDA. And let me take a second here and change over here, so I've got the right agenda in front of me. I'll have Mitch come up. Looks like we have approval of minutes from June 3rd.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from June 3rd.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Summers, second by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The participation agreement 27, or 20-17. Mitch, you want to?
Just a little background, the, this is Procter &amp; Gamble. They started Project Maple. I think we finished it up in 2015, the actual project area and stuff. We pulled the trigger this year, and this is the agreement between Procter &amp; Gamble and the redevelopment agency of Box Elder County.
Maple slash.
Uh, let's see. This project area, the, the real meat of it is, it's a 20-year project area, includes, let's see, 90% of the tax increment going to the redevelopment agency with, for the first five years. And then we would be sending most, if, well, most of that back to the, to Procter &amp; Gamble during those five years, and then it would transfer to 70% for the next 15 years.
So basically, just like the others?
Just like the other, almost, almost exactly. It's a 2, 230 to $300 million investment into our county, like I said, the 20-year project area. So I don't know if you have any other, other questions or whatever, but.
No.
I don't.
Looks like we're going to at least retain Joe for the next three years, so.[1732.66]